All right, meeting is appointed time is the special meeting of the Pleasant Plains Community Unit District Number Eight Board of Education. It shall come to order on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. First item is Pleasant Plains. A pleasant meeting is to the right of the United States of America and to the total population of the nation in the business of the community. President, please call the board.
President Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
Ms. Hannity? Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Nessler?
Here.
Ms. Chiquita?
Present.
Everybody's family there is here. Six six zero.
Thank you. Going to change the period of public comments until after the board motion is made, but prior to voting on the motion, that way we can have the public input after the motion is made. And then after the public input, we will have a board discussion and then vote upon the item. There are only one item tonight. And I will start out by making a motion to approve, starting with the two thousand and twenty-one school year, where remote learning is outlined in phase one of the Pleasant Plains reopening plan for a period of nine weeks with review of plan conducted and any regularly scheduled board meeting. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. Does anyone wish to address the board on this matter? Meetings are allowed five minutes.
I guess this one's clean if I'm the first one. Hi, I'm Liz Brown Reeves. I'm the mother of Henry and Leo Reeves who are headed to the middle school. First of all, I want to say by being a parent here today does not mean we are troublemakers and that we don't have faith in our district. I think that's the first thing and one of the biggest misnomers that's been out there. What it means is we care about our kids. And so I know I'm speaking for a lot of my friends who aren't here today, and we are very passionate about this because we feel like we have not gotten a lot of answers, specifically from the administration. Our family strategically moved to Plains for our kids to go to school here. We wanted the smaller school setting and a sense of community, and we bought a house specifically in this district. Our experience has been beyond top notch. I can't compliment Jamie Yates and Heather Greer for their hard work and all the teachers, aides, and additional staff that we have interacted with throughout the years. We love and appreciate all of them. While I'm speaking today, it's not about the quality or the educators that work in our school, but instead about what's transpired over the last several months to our district regarding the return to school plan. We're not here to bash. I am just personally frustrated and here on behalf of myself and a lot of other parents that I've spoke to personally. I want to make it very clear, we are a family that believes in science, we believe that COVID is real, and we think that wearing masks are essential. What I feel like is the communication has been very disingenuous. Let me walk you through the original timeline. On July thirteenth, we got survey results as parents. It showed only seven percent of the parents supported complete remote learning. July twenty-second, Superintendent Rungy emails us saying we're going one hundred percent remote. July twenty-seventh, we're here at the school board vote. The school board goes into an executive session under the guise of personnel matters. What came out of that executive session was a comprehensive hybrid learning program. I question if that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Personnel matters are to be discussed in an executive session. Conversations around plans and schools reopening are not to be discussed in a closed executive session. On July twenty-eighth, we get the email from Superintendent Rungy saying we're going to a hybrid option. On August twelfth, we get an email that, from Superintendent Rungy, that we're going back to remote learning. Each time parents were asked for their input, our superintendent is ignoring it. As a parent, this is very, very frustrating. As a taxpayer, it's wrong. We need answers to why you have decided to change before you make a motion. What does that look like? What is it? Because we have no idea and school starts on the twenty-fourth. Just because these parents are coming forward does not mean we don't love our teachers, we don't want safety. Do not take it out on the parents and the kids of this district because you're asked tough questions. I would like an answer from the school board members. Are you, as school board members, satisfied with the type of communication and treatment that is coming to parents of this district? What can we do to remedy it, to make it clear? If we're going to remote, and it looks like we are, you've got the votes lined up today, if we are going to remote, explain it, please. I beg of you, tell us, what does the schedule look like? What will our kids' days look like? Do I have to have a babysitter in the afternoon? We have no idea. Share a schedule. We are begging you, ask parents. Thank you very much.
Greg, I think at this time, it might be a good idea to allow Mr. Langley and Mrs. Fessler to talk a little bit about our remote learning plan and how it will differ from last spring. And I'll open the floor up to Jill and John. You want to talk a little bit about that? I'd appreciate it. Anybody who wants to take a look. For Tom, just imagine stopping you guys in Chicago.
If I say it here, does everybody hear me?
You might not understand what I'm saying. I'm just a student. Okay.
So lots of questions from our way as far as what's the big difference between strong remote and how far remote is going to look? And I want to start by saying the largest two differences are that last spring, the younger state board of education said that we could not full, kids accountable for grades, so it was a no harm and foul situation, as we know. So we couldn't do, not as much to hurt their grades, but basically what they had with on our tour team, whatever that day was, they would have that grade until the end of the school year and accept we're to improve it, so we offered that opportunity. So that kind of tear me a little bit with what we could do within the classroom. And I'll be honest with you, just seeing my kids coming out, I mean, you know, the kids are like, I'm good, like I had great days, I'm done, you know, I'm going to do schoolwork. That made things very difficult for us. Our percentage of actual attendance in remote was low, and it was getting better and better. They got a little less in middle school, and they were really dropped off from high school. They had a period, they had everything else. The other thing is that, as far as schedule, what we pulled up to do was two year classes. We weren't ready for it. We absolutely weren't ready for it. We had some teachers that were very tech savvy. We had some teachers that were like, whoa, Google Chrome, what is that? You know, what are we going to do with that? We could get to them, train them fast enough to get them into a remote type comparable setting. So we have worked with them through the last summer for hours and hours and hours. These students have dedicated themselves completely to making sure that they can use remotely in an effective manner, in as authentic experience as they possibly can. So each kid, well, let me start by saying, classes will go from eight to zero. Okay? The four classes will go from eight to zero. I told you a little bit different, you know, like I said earlier, I'm just saying, the high schools will look different around their schools, and a little bit of shortened room. Okay? They can't necessarily, I did it to only four. Running down the most cool, cool, like two floors in the morning, okay? Because they're going to get up, because they're going to log in, just like they're walking into the school building, and they're going to see their teacher, they're going to do normal activities, do the normal thing. It will all be light, because Mr. Langley is going to be someone to test by, you know. And they're still on to their normal lesson. Now, I will tell you this, we are very cognitive of two extra times. We do not want that to be an issue. So just like in normal classroom, they might kind of come to activities, they may do some group activities and that kind of thing. So there will be lights from the screen. We don't want them on screen for four constant hours. They'll run through their regular rotation. They'll switch from reading to math to science to social science. If the kids are receiving intervention, they'll have location services. They will still be receiving those. They may be in the afternoon by appointments. We are working with SASE, which is our co-op, to make sure that those kids' needs are met. The special teachers will be reaching out to the students with IEPs and will make sure to accommodate those. And that be physical therapy, disability, you know, speech therapy, whatever the case be, all of those needs are going to be met. We will be compliant with the IEP. They will sit in this ten year, and then we will have one hour in the afternoon, and I'll send sort of a medical, each building will be different. A lot of it will be tutorial, extra help. What do you need to get? Do you need help writing a paper? Do you need help, you know, do you do a study or for exam, that kind of thing? We'll have all kinds of stuff available. Our teachers will be available from data bot to three bot every day. They have regular classroom hours, we will have access to them. They are responsible for making sure that the needs of their kids are met and the needs of parents are met. Okay? Uh, what am I missing? Primary platforms, we will classroom, where you want to follow, and CSO for whatever, okay? Which is more appropriate for that language. All the teachers have been trained on those, and they'll be able to use them effectively. We have textbooks, so those will be interactive. We have current teachers to make sure that they have everything in their power to connect with the kids, because we know they all look very, very young. We are very aware of social emotionality. Our counselors will be on hand from eight to three. If kids need to come in for individual appointments, we will accommodate that, of course, making sure the parents and the kids are all through with that. So the only way I can say that can only be a key for them that works to be, it's still a little different from fifteen classroom, you guys, we're doing our best. I will tell you that in the event that we were in a hybrid situation, we already have staff members who are fully cognitive, we have staff members who are willing to touch people, so we don't need to be that kind of. Okay? So it is hit us and our family, your family, just as close as it possibly can. So that said, I'll turn it over to John, if you can talk about the tech side of it, and you can understand exactly how this will be over two minutes or five.
I'm John Langley, I'm the Instruction Technology Coordinator for the district. Basically, what that means, I'm a teacher that not only teaches to students, but I also work with the teachers to train them, work with the administrators to help train them, and I also work with parents who have any kind of technology needs. Some parents have already reached out to me through this process for a little bit of help, and that's what I'm here for. So let me kind of explain some of the training we've been doing. Jill's already alluded to some of the training we've done with the online platforms. As she said, kindergarten is going to be using a CSO platform. I will be making video tutorials on that process and hopefully get those out by the beginning or middle of next week, so students and parents have those available, so they see how to go through that process at home. We also have Google Meet that is going to be, as she said, first grade through twelfth grade. Most of the sixth, actually fifth, this year, fifth grade through twelfth grade have used it, but we are still going to make video tutorials for the students. On that one, I will probably make one for fifth grade on up, and I will make one for first grade through fourth grade. The first grade through fourth grade one will involve pauses, so we can make sure the students and parents can see where we're at, make sure everybody's caught up, and then give you time to start the video again, maybe a little bit more of a chunk and go through. Now, as far as the training, to give you an idea of what that looks like, my recommendation to the teachers is that they make sure that they are training or teaching the students in chunks. So those teaching for the younger kids are looking at five to ten minute lessons where they're lecturing or demonstrating, and then they have some kind of application and then question and clarification. So that in sync time can be mostly making sure that the students understand the lesson and they can ask questions. For the older students, those lessons obviously might stretch into the fifteen minutes and rarely the twenty minutes, but still giving time with that in sync, the synchronous time to be dedicated mostly to the question and answer and clarification questions. Again, all of those will be recorded, they'll be uploaded to the students' platform, so if it's Google Classroom, they will be available Google Classroom for the student. Kindergartens will be on CSO, and the teachers are working through that. While all this is going on, teachers, again, will be available to go through the process of the chat, to talk to stu-, excuse me, to talk to students. If they need to do one-on-one video conferencing with students, we want to make sure that they are able to do that, so we're doing a little bit more training next week to make sure they're comfortable with that whole process. I do want to reiterate that in addition to those classroom videos, everybody, since we're going one-to-one, everybody at Farmingdale is going to get an extra training video, and that's going to be on a badge sign-in system. And this is kind of a slip process where it looks like, kind of the QR codes you've seen, each student will have his or her badge. They will open the Chromebook, I'll have directions for them to click a button, it's the next button, so it makes it easy. Their webcam comes up, they hold their badge to the webcam, and that logs them into the Chromebook, and they're ready to go. Once Farmingdale kids are in the Chromebook, they open up the Chrome browser, it has their bookmark bar for grade level will be in the top left. And my video is going to walk them through all that, explaining it, and again, parents will have access to that to help guide their student through that. And I don't know if Jill expressed it enough, but I want to make sure that everyone understands, we expect parents to be there only as facilitators. Teachers are teaching, okay? I'll say it again, teachers are teaching. If kids need help with something and it's a tech issue, definitely, you're contacting me, John Langley, or you're contacting Mike Squires, our Director of Technology, if it's a hardware networking issue. The other thing I want to address and make sure everybody's aware, based on our hybrid learning questionnaire survey, we asked who had issues with internet. We have gone through that list, we have hotspots available for the people who qualify. If you have questions on that, you can contact the unit office and know what's going. Those hotspots will be passed out at the same time as the student Chromebooks, and I believe those are scheduled, the admins are going to be releasing that out, I think it's Thursday and Friday, last I heard, I just make sure that was right. And I understand there is frustration, we're trying to put together all the parts as we are finding out new information, so we're trying to get that out to you as much as possible. Again, if you have any questions about the technology side of it, definitely feel free to reach out to me or to Mr. Squires.
Are the hotspots on one per student or one per household?
One per family, and we were guaranteed by Verizon that they would hold, thank you for, or, they would hold up to ten devices. The caveat is those hotspots will only connect to the district Chromebooks. So they will only connect to the district Chromebooks.
I appreciate that.
I know they didn't want me to answer questions much. Do you want me to go ahead?
If you have a question, I can tell you a question, that's fine.
I think it's a little bit of a B E office, my book phone is in the Verizon. I don't think I deserve that right now, so what's my option? Because Verizon, my book phone, B E office was simply because I had to call it to my cell phone with A T T.
Email me so I can work directly with you.
Okay.
Let's do that.
So I want to close with, we believe that we have created a situation, a learning situation, that is paraglottic to a classroom experience that we possibly can't. There will be live interaction with teacher and student. Our teachers are dedicated to making sure that the kids get what they need, whatever it is, whether it's academics, social emotional, it doesn't matter. Our teachers know that their job has changed, their mindset has changed. They know that we can extend that of remote learning for a period of time. So we have prepared them all summer, we have a full week with them next week to prepare them additionally, to make sure that they are ready to go, and to make sure all of our auxiliary staff is ready as well, our counselors, our nurses, everybody on the same page. We believe we've done that, we will perfect that next week to the best part of it, and we hope that your kids will be in very good hands and receive the best educational experience they can in our own set. Okay? Yes, sir.
So you have a pool of substitute teachers, but you wish to have them to give them the same technology?
Yes, and not a pool. Yes. Yes. Hopefully you can produce a professional team that will last.
We will, in front of the computer, those children most likely will be working one-on-one, I think by appointment, about that, and they will be reaching after that.
So I have a quick question. He said they're going to do group work to break up their screen time for a month. So it was kind of a two-part, my case won't do more, our school has a lot of work as a night out work, because somebody's going to pay for a good job. How are they going to do group work at different times of the class, and how are they going to do that group work if they're not on a screen with the rest of the students? They won't be paying for this, right? How does the model go, basically, the teacher? Okay, can I ask a question? Okay. So remember, all the sessions will be recorded. Yeah, so how do they do group work? So when you get home, you guys will have to, how do you get at home? But I'm also thinking that the teacher will reach out to the death of it. Those are all individual circumstances that each teacher cannot assume.
I know this is probably not directly answering your question, but on the group work, one of the things that I'm going to put the teachers on is having group assignments, also if they want to have a group assignment, where those students can work at different times.
But it's still a line of screen time, but it's the purpose of the regular time.
Well, they have screen time after you and your husband get off work.
Definitely, we're not doing this alone.
And that's okay, because then they could get on and they could do part of that group part, even though it's a different time from the other students, it will still be exciting. I'm going to train them how to do those kind of projects as well.
I believe that-
We're trying to work all of your scenarios, and I understand, I understand.
I believe that this, please feel free to reach out with an email need with any kind of specific situations. I am more than happy to facilitate between teacher and family, and we are more than happy to make sure that connections are made or needs are met within our capabilities. I'm more than happy to take a phone call in my office or reach out to me via email, and tech questions you need to go to.
It's probably a rhetorical question, you might be interested in it. Do you feel that the issue of teacher accountability has been addressed? Because I know that from March, April, May, myself and a lot of other neighbors in my neighborhood conferred that maybe one or two teachers were actually teaching and others completely dropped off the radar. So we have multiple students in the district that may have lost fifty to sixty percent of that three-month period. And I know that we can't hold the district accountable for not being able to instantly adapt and train based on what happened in March, but I guess the only reason I came tonight is that I just want to make sure that there's a system in place so that if we set some of those same accountability issues happening in August, how can we be proactive and immediately address that? Because I emailed the school board, I emailed the principal back in April, never got a reply, you know, everybody's busy. Eventually, I emailed the board president, and then he, you know, did me overview, and I got a reply from you, which I was satisfied with, but I just don't want to, you know, we lost three months last year, we lost additional months because what was supposed to be honors biology class turned into a, here's the worksheet class, go look at the book. And, you know, like one of my neighbors here that just addressed you, I mean, I proactively moved to this district because of the academic reputation, and I kind of see the graph going in the wrong way. I mean, high school honors biology should not be taught with a worksheet and a textbook for the entire year. That's just not my definition of what the class is. But anyway, I'm rambling. I just want to make sure that the channels of communication, you know, you communicated back to me, but the board did not, one board member did, but I want to know that come August twenty-fourth, if after a week we've got some data and it's like, hey, these people aren't teaching anything, they're not even logging in, will we be able to address that? Because it wasn't addressed in the spring.
Absolutely. So I'll go back to your original question, which was, do we feel that our staff understands the accountability piece? They absolutely do, they fully understand, they are new to page three, they are responsible for presenting interactively, so we're not, you know, which I think will make the world of difference, but kids consider teachers, kids can actually interact with our teachers, we are our teammates. So I think that that's kind of personally a lot more things. If for some reason you are not happy, you need to reach out to the teacher. Next step is the principal, and then the next step would probably be me, and then you can go further out of the chain, but I guarantee you that in a hierarchy, you're going to get a result, whatever the issue is.
I think I'll go directly to you, because in the past, I've used the hierarchy and, you know, did not get a response.
I would encourage you to talk to the teacher, because he or she will know more of what's going on in the classroom, you are absolutely welcome to that. Okay? I'm going to leave it open for questions now, Greg.
All right, I agree, I think you went different.
Just a couple of quick responses, especially to the accountability piece. The difference in remote learning in the fall is going to be vastly different than it was in the spring. We've had an opportunity to work on that through the summer, and I agree, accountability has to be key, and we've worked a lot on that over the summer. I encourage input from the parents, whether that goes to Jill or to me or to board members, we'll get it to the right person and give the answers we can to you. A couple of other key points I want to make sure you're aware of. We've worked on the internet piece to provide connectivity to people who don't have it, so we can make that work remotely. We've also worked with our staff over the summer, and we've got a long week next week to work with our staff to get them prepared. One thing, an obstacle that we are constantly trying to overcome, and it's getting worse, right now we have eight staff members quarantined that either have COVID or have been in contact with somebody with it, and trying to fill those gaps and those holes is going to be nearly impossible, even in a remote setting. So that's something we're constantly trying to work through and will continue to, but I encourage the feedback, email us and let us know what we can do to help you, and we'll do our best to try. So that's all I got, Greg.
All right. Who would like to talk fast?
I just had a quick question. I want to know what changed between now and the vote that, at the end of July, that has all of a sudden caused the revote? And my second question is, are we going to be getting metrics about when, when do we come back to school? When, what are the standards we have to meet, like what numbers, what, when does that happen? How is the board looking at, you know, coming back to school?
The reason we're having this meeting is, the board president, I call it a special meeting. Positivity rate has increased in Sangin County, the number of cases are decreasing in Sangin County, our middle school sports are now paused due to COVID quarantines and such. So I think the handwriting is on the wall where this is all going, and I really did not feel it would be doing any of the parents or students any good to start, and then when you start having to send people home for fourteen days, as required by the Illinois Department of Public Health rules, you're going to start losing more teachers, more kids. They now classify two children or two people in a classroom who have COVID, that is called an outbreak, and it's with two students within fourteen day period. Once that happens, the local health department then begins doing the contact tracing and such. I'm the one that called this meeting, and I'm the one that made the motion to go to this learning. I think for your second question, for the metrics, we will have something for the next board meeting, because part of the motion is to reevaluate this at the next board meeting and subsequent board meetings. I was looking online and such, looking in places such as Avenue York- Uh, I was looking online and such, and looking in places such as out in New York, they're using, uh, their goal is to get to three percent positivity rate when they start reconsidering to open schools and such. So we've got to look at the metrics and talk to the local health department to see where we're actually going to be at and what metrics we will use to determine when to reopen. But we are going to look at it in each subsequent board meeting.
And that'll be communicated to the parents, though? That'll be communicated to the parents?
Yes. Yes.
That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I decided tonight I was going to have my thoughts be a little more organized. Um, so when I came and spoke the last meeting, I was unprepared and I was emotional. I spoke from my heart with the frustrations of remote learning and socialization on my children. I stood beside the majority of the parents, the same ones you see here, pleading for our children to go back to school. You guys listened. I was actually relieved to hear that we listened. I came to that meeting with every intention of walking out of here pissed off because you weren't going to listen. Well, today I'm back. You can obviously guess how I feel. Seven percent of the students wanted remote learning, seven percent of the parents. We argued it, you guys agreed, we would start hybrid phase two. Thank you. We registered for school. Roughly, based on the teachers that were assigned to remote learning, I'm assuming maybe twenty-five percent of the children chose remote learning. So again, your majority of parents want in-school learning. It was rudely suggested that we read the ISB plan. I read it. I have some quotes I'm going to read in a minute. It was also suggested that certain people got up here and spoke, and their credentials didn't warrant their opinion. I don't even need to say more about that. I apologize, that's just beyond acceptable. Coming back to this meeting, I find it just as disgraceful that we had a agreed upon plan. These infection rate is up, yes, but our warning level is improved. The infection rate is the only warning trigger we have in Sangamon County. So I wanted to read the quotes out of the school plan that it was suggested, that we read. So page eleven. Districts must seek to implement appropriate plans that address the needs of all students and caregivers by taking in consideration language, diverse learning needs, home living situations, access to technology, thank you, you guys have been addressing that, I appreciate it, access to parental support, and access to transportation. Our most vulnerable student population still needs most. Page thirteen. When remote learning occurs, teachers and staff should seek to better understand what may be occurring in the home. This is especially relevant in this time of rapidly changing public health, economic uncertainty, heightened awareness of racial injustice, and systemic inequities. And so for students, they could be home alone while we're working, they could be taking care of other siblings or ill members, working extra hours for high schoolers, they could be coping with an illness or loss of a family member. The students may suffer from anxiety and/or depression. Caregivers may not be able to supervise schoolwork for a variety of reasons, and they recommend that districts and educators respond to the situations experienced by students with empathy, flexibility, and creativity to mitigate the challenges and maximize learning. Page seventy-four. Encourage to plan and create academic and social engagement activities with a focus on the whole child. Place focus on the most essential standards when planning to ensure students' academic and social, emotional needs. Keep in mind that family circumstances vary widely and ensure that caregivers have opportunities to provide input. Provide input, that you guys are ignoring, into what learning format is best for their child. Flexible approach to instruction should be a primary focus. And then on page sixty-one, it's specific there for, um, for the second grade, but actually talks about children all the way up to thirteen, and this is a direct quote. Young children learn best from in, from live interactions with people. ISBE recommends prioritizing in-person learning, not virtual. In-person learning for children age thirteen and younger. They recommend to minimize digital technology use as applicable. So I know someone with a big name in Plains got up here and challenged you guys last time. I don't have a big name. I don't care if the town hates me. I finish with one question. If you are not going to stand there, in this case, sit, as a voice of the parents, then why are you sitting there? Before you go into discussions, whether it be actually out here in front of us this time or behind it, remember your oath. It is to prioritize the assets of this district, the assets of our children. It is their learning, their education, and their future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Severino. I have a husband and three kids in the district, eighth grade, tenth grade, and eleventh grade. First, I would like to say that I've always been very proud to say that my kids are in the Plains School District. I've only had positive experiences with teachers and staff, and there has always been a sense of pride with having kids in this district. I was unable, unable to attend the last school board meeting, but I attempted to watch it on livestream. I also emailed at least six of the board members prior to the meeting and got no reply of my concerns, and got no reply. So I'm not going to rehash everything that was concerned and expressed at the last board meeting, but we all know that the CDC said it's key for kids to return to school for their social, educational, and emotional development. And we also know that the American Academy of Pediatricians encourages, quote, "having students physically present in school," end quote. And our CDC director actually said today concerning schools reopening, "our guidance is there to help them begin to open safely and sensibly." The timing of that is going to have to be decided one school at a time. So my question is tonight, and it has been asked already once, what exactly is the board's plan for opening? What is the numbers we're going to strive to be under, below, or above? New cases, hospitalizations, deaths in Sangamon County? And what number will the board decide that is going to be a safe number to return to in-person learning? And more importantly, will that number be communicated to the community? And have the numbers ever been broken out and looked at by our specific school district? Or are we only going by the county? And this was the first, I've heard tonight that we have all these staff members that have been quarantined, and that may result in a school shortage, substitutes. Why hasn't that been communicated to the community? Maybe say, the board meeting tonight is to discuss going back to remote only because of these factors. That hasn't been communicated either. And how can the increase in cases in our district going to remote only, yet Lu High is two blocks away, and they're going to full day every day? Aren't we all looking at these same numbers? What is the magic number? I think that's what we, as parents in the community, want to know. This new virus may be around for a long time, and there may be a new virus next year. We need to learn how to live safely with this, and we need to have a reopen plan. And most importantly, this plan needs to be communicated openly to all of the parents in the community. Thank you.
Um, I have a daughter that just graduated from high school, and two kids in the district. I spoke to you two weeks ago about our family's belief that we need to have in-person learning option. I'm not going to repeat those comments tonight, pardon two weeks ago. And other people might talk about them tonight. I believe that the district's phase-two plan, uh, implemented all the CDC guidelines and could allow the kids to go to school in a safe manner. But I'm not going to talk about that tonight. What I want to talk about is what I believe we need to do to improve the process as we move forward as a community. Number one, we have to improve the lines of communication between the district and our parents. A couple people already mentioned this tonight, and I just want to reiterate that. Looking back at how this plan was unveiled to the community, I got three emails. One with the original plan on, I think it was July twenty-eighth. A second email after the last board meeting saying we were going to amend it, and then a third email Wednesday saying we're going to have a special session, and we're going to change it. No explanation, zero. Even tonight, the motion was made, and it was opened up to questions without any explanation of why the motion was made. And I appreciate your thoughts, but I really wish that that could have been happening Wednesday when the email went out, or when you made the motion tonight. We need explanations for why these decisions are being made. Help us understand your thought process. What options were considered? Why didn't they work? What obstacles stand in your way? Give us the facts and the figures. We may not like the decision, but at least we'll understand your reasoning behind it. If a survey is sent to parents and you get a response rate of ninety-three percent and then dismiss that, give us your justification. Otherwise, people are going to feel like their opinions don't matter, and they're not going to respond to future surveys. The more information, the better these days. There's no such thing as too much information in, in the world that we live in right now. But I believe that this lack of communication between the district and parents has created a void, and that void has been filled with frustration and, um, and speculation. We need more information. All this could have been avoided if we just had more information. If we've got a lot of teachers out, let us know. Maybe some people wouldn't even be here tonight if they knew that information. Number two, and this was touched on by a couple people, we need to know what the back-to-school plan looks like. The date, October second, nine weeks has been thrown out. What is your matrix? What are the numbers that we, as a community, have to hit in order for kids to return to school in person? We can't have arbitrary or subjective measures. It can't be somebody's opinion or just their gut instinct. We need to know what to expect, and our kids want that same expectation. Now, will there be risks of exposure even if we do come back to school? Absolutely. There is risk of exposure in everything that we do right now in our lives. There are risks when we go to the restaurants with our kids, there are risks when we go to the grocery store, there are risks when we go on vacation out of state, and there are risks when we're playing youth sports. Have we stopped doing these things? No. We manage the risks the best that we can. And I believe that the education of our children and their ability to come to school and be there in person should be no different. Thank you for your time.
My name is Nicole Warner. I spoke before, and I got a little upset, but this time I'm going to keep it together. My son's name is Jackson, and he's six, and he has severe autism, and he's non-verbal. I just want to say to the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the janitors, the principals, et cetera, and you, the board members, from August to June this school year, you are essential There's a ninety-five percent recovery rate. Ninety-three percent of the parents wanted in-person learning. If this major, majority of the parents are willing to send their kids to school, then we should be given that option. You, the board members, are elected officials to represent the taxpayers. In this situation, the parents' opinions should matter most. If we are given an option of stay at home or to go in person, and parents want to risk it, then we should be able to give, you should be able to give us that cho, choice, excuse me. We, the parents, understand the school could get shut down at any time based on the outbreak or inadequate staffing. We, the parents, understand sending our children is a risk, but do the benefits outweigh How does it planes is supposed to be the best? This is especially true to low achieving and special needs kids. If we do fully remote, there needs to be consideration in options for special needs kids. These kids need to be brought into small groups, like she said, and they need to be taught, like they know. We are now in August. Things are not like where they were in March. There was, there's not a stay-at-home order. People are going out to eat. People are going to Walmart. I've been so crowded at Walmart that I myself went and got tested for COVID because I had a sore throat. I was negative. Children need their teachers. They need their paraprofessionals. Again, they are essential workers in Apple. Just like nurses. I'm a nurse myself. I have to go to work. I have to take care of people that are in our community. I have to be there for the families that are there losing their loved ones. But these loved ones are having underlying conditions. There's other things going on. I also have a friend that is the head of the pediatric superintendent at St. John's Hospital. There's been no cases of COVID in kids that were admitted. My question is, if remote learning is put into place for our district, how will my child learn? He won't. He will fall behind for certain. He refuses to do work at home, and he has behaviors that are very frustrating and sad for us as parents to watch. How will children with complex needs succeed? All schools in our area are going back. SHD, Springfield Christian, Calvary, Trinity Lutheran, St. Agnes, they're all smaller schools, they're all headed back to school. And I understand that there's cases that are in the district, but we're going to have COVID-19. We're going to have it today. We're going to have it three weeks from now, three years from now, maybe. But we cannot keep these kids at home. Again, to the teachers, all of you guys, the janitors, and everybody working so hard to make your plan work, you guys are all essential workers.
My name is Oliver Gross, and I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. I came and I spoke last month. One of the things I spoke about was masks and the importance of them. Multiple board members at that meeting looked at me, smirked at me about masks like it was a joke. That was disrespectful on your part. Twenty-six years as a healthcare professional, twenty-four as a nurse, board certified in my specialty, ICU, OR, graduate level, master's level education in physiology and pathophysiology. I darn well know what I'm talking about. The next time I speak about something like that, I expect to be respected.
I just want to make, I don't want to smirk at you, sir, but I don't-
You were one of them. I chose not to put your name in.
I'll tell you what, you can call, I don't have to give my name to someone, you and I can have the conversation. I'm a very respectful man in our own land now. My point is, if I smirk at you, I apologize for all those people because I do not intend to smirk at you, and that's something I can't.
Thank you. Second, I'm going to, I'll be honest with everybody here, I'm on the other side of the fence. I want to address the comments that were made following the vote last month. Lots of people spoke about the survey and those survey results. Pretty much, I was one person, and I think there was one other staff member from the elementary school that spoke in favor of the plan of going remote. You went out on executive session. Quite a while later, you came back. Mr. Humphreys, you made a motion that said we're going to go to phase two immediately, August twenty-fourth. Multiple committee members, multiple board members made statements contrary to how they were going to vote. It's a hard decision. Mr. Cohen, you said, "This is a hard decision." I got the feeling from you that your opinion was that, yes, you were going to change the vote, you were going to go to phase two, but I don't know that you a hundred percent agreed with. But you made it was, you said it was a hard decision. My question is, was it the hard decision or the popular decision? Mr. Nessler, you said, "God help us if we're wrong." Look at the school districts that have opened up across the country. There certainly have had problems. God's not going to help us with this. The healthcare professionals, the teachers, your principals, the families, the bus drivers, the janitors, everybody in the school community are the ones who are going to have to help us with this. Secretary, you said, "We're giving you what you want." That sounds like something I'd say to my kid when I take away their screen time, not the hell of a school district. Others said nothing or indicated that maybe you disagreed with the vote. One member of this board, Mr. James T. Coe, spoke up and said, voted to keep the plan the way it was. You spoke about the socialization realities of what school's going to look like. Kids separated by distance- Kids separated by distance, by boards, whatever. Teachers, one corner of the room, and not being able to walk up and talk to the kid across the room. I hope you addressed that in the executive session. I'm sorry if the rest of the board didn't understand it. Again, I know I am on the other side of this, but I thank you for speaking out and I thank you for saying what you said. I feel like we're right back where we started. I made plans, now I've gotta revert those plans. Or I don't have to revert those plans. Other people have to revert those plans. I had chosen to put my kids fully remote. Now, all the families who said, "We're gonna go back to school," that made some plans, are now flipping them back. Our principals are flipping them back. Everything is flipping back. I know there are major issues with internet, IEPs, 504, special needs, and those kids need what they need. No doubt about it. I'll be the first one to stand up and cheer for those kids. But I trust our principals to work on that. I haven't always seen eye to eye with them, but if there's one thing I've learned, they got the heart and the soul, their hearts and their souls in our kids. And I feel like you, as a board, let them down. In closing, a few other things. You made a vote last month that I believe was the popular vote, not the right vote. It was the easy way out. The hard decision, the right decision, is often not the popular decision, but it would have been the safe decision. We've already heard about cases with our staff members. How many more will we have had? So changing this plan back, we're flipping everything. We're asking a lot of extra work of those people. So, Mr. Humphreys and the rest of the board, when you said last month, "We back up our administrators," do it all the way. Not some of the way, not part of the way, not some of the time. Don't make them do things twice. We voted, you changed the plan, now you're changing it back and you're asking all of those people to start over again. Not just the teachers, not just the administrators, but also the families. So, when you think about your votes, is it popular? Maybe not. But is it the right and safe vote for our kids, our teachers, our principals, and everyone else in this community? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Carrie Ward and I've been affiliated in one way or another with the Pleasant Plains School District for nearly thirty years, since nineteen ninety-one, when my husband began at Pleasant Plains as a teacher. And through all the time that we're raising our two daughters, one of whom graduated in twenty-fourteen and the other, who is a senior this year. And I would love nothing more than for my senior to be able to have some semblance of her own in her senior year. That doesn't make her more special than any senior in any other part of the country. Right? And I recognize that we are just not in normal circumstances. And I believe that the original plan that was submitted and that was considered, that included a Phase One with a remote nine weeks, was a good plan. And I didn't attend the last board meeting because I supported the plan that was submitted and that was being considered. And I regret that I didn't do that because I think that you need to hear some balance and I don't want to give the impression that I represent more people than I do, nor do I feel that anyone else does. And so, I think that it is a good decision to reconsider your decision. I think beginning with Phase One, that allows for a nine-week rollout is the right thing to do. I think it takes into consideration not only the students and the families whose thoughts and opinions are important, but the teachers and the faculty and the staff because our students don't go to school in a vacuum. And as much as the parents' opinions should be weighed and considered, I think that in proposing an initial plan, you also considered the well-being of the faculty and the staff and the administration and everyone else who's equally affected by those who attend school. And so, I recognize and I respect the reasons some families have for the expedite to start and for the desire to begin at Phase Two, but I respectfully request that the board reconsider and begin at Phase One. And I think that the plan you began with does not assume that we'll be remote all year long. I think it offered a rollout and an opportunity to review and revise and hopefully have the opportunity to safely do in-person school, which I think is what most people want the outcome to be. I don't see it as advantageous to start, to have to stop, to start, to have to stop, which isn't all likelihood what will happen. And I think offering a nine-week rollout doesn't mean that when we do start, if we get to start, that we won't have that as well, 'cause we might. But I think that it provides an opportunity to review and to reflect, and I think it is most sensitive to not only students, but to faculty, staff, and administration as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Neil. My wife and I have two children here in the school district. We have one in middle school, one here in elementary, so we have sixth grade and first grade. Both my children love the school and honestly, all they want is the opportunity to come here and be at school. I've been to the last few board meetings. I see a lot of familiar faces tonight that were at the last two board meetings, so I'm not gonna repeat anything I said. But Mr. President, I heard you speak about some metrics. I'd like to share some metrics and I also have some questions that I'm hoping the school board can provide some statistical information back to me on. This is based on today, August fourteenth. According to the latest information from the IDPH, five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three COVID tests have been administered for residents of ZIP Code six-two-seven-eleven. One hundred sixty-five of those individuals have tested positive, which is a positivity rate of two-point-eight percent. The major Pleasant Plains ZIP Code of six-two-six-seven-seven has had six hundred and eighty-six tests, twenty-six positive results, three-point-eight percent positivity rate. That is all men, women, children ages zero to a hundred and beyond. There weren't enough positive reports for children in the Pleasant Plains ZIP Code for the IDPH to even calculate results. For the six-two-seven-eleven ZIP Code, there were thirteen individuals. That's a positivity rate of zero-zero-point-two percent. Zero-point-two percent. Couple of questions I have. Earlier in the week, I believe it was Tuesday, remote learning class sizes came out, and in-person learning was due to come out today, that's been postponed on Monday. What is the average size of our classrooms? What percentage of families chose remote learning in comparison to in-person only learning? I'd like to see those figures and see the actual size of the people in the classrooms and then take a look and see if that's something that can be social distanced safely for faculty and for students. Couple of other things I kinda wanna ask about, you know, a couple of other people have mentioned this. There seems to be this magical date of October 2nd. Why is that date? It's not just us, it's also one-eight-six. That date has been specified by several districts, but nobody knows why. And lastly, the last piece of information I really would like to know is, you know, one-eight-six, they announced the results of the percentage of their faculty, their teachers that voted not to return to in-person learning versus who chose in-person. Will we be releasing those results for our families to know that same information? However, twice tonight, two different board members mentioned, "Seven or eight faculty, staff members have tested positive for COVID." How are they being held accountable for their social implications outside of the school and for protecting everybody else? Because we were chastised very heavily at the end of the last board meeting by two members of the school board. And everybody here was very kind and very respectful with all their speeches. We did not receive that kindness in return by a few individuals. But again, I appreciate everything you do. Like somebody else echoed, I'm not here to bash you guys. We support everything that you guys do. We're just asking for a different perspective. You know, we'll talk about metrics. Those are the metrics. That's scientific data based on today. That's not thought, that's not hearsay. That's what it is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who can just address some more?
Happy Friday, everyone. Uh, my name's Laura Manzer. I have two boys in the district going into grades five and six. I talked to you last time. So I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna belabor my points, I'm not gonna reiterate what I came to you to express, which was my support for the in-person hybrid option that you all at the last board meeting accepted and felt like we were heard, our voices were heard. So my comments are really, again, not innovative to what you've already heard, but it speaks to the process. I think my frustrations have been primarily about the communication piece, and you've heard that before, but specifically when the survey was taken and I appreciated the fact that our feedback was solicited and I was at that board meeting and asked if that was a consideration, so I definitely appreciate that. And I do appreciate, again, I appreciate all of our teachers, all of the administration, all of you board, that was a difficult position and issues and decisions you had to navigate. But I think when that draft plan was rolled out, it didn't even acknowledge the survey results, more did it explain, "Thank you, parents, we've heard you, but this is why we have decided to go a hundred percent remote in Phase One for X, Y, and Z reasons," or how many of our reasons. And that felt a little hurtful. And I think if that had been explained and communicated, I can't speak for everybody behind me, but for myself personally, I might have been able to accept that a little more. I wouldn't necessarily have liked it, but I would have respected that. So I would just reiterate again, you know, as parents, and I'm not an educator, I'll be helping as an educator here soon, and I'm not an administrator. I don't understand the intricacies of how a school operates or functions, but as a parent, I'm also still a critical thread in the fabric that is supporting our kids and our students' learning process. Without that piece, it falls apart. I, like some others, came to this district specifically, we were in one-eight-six. In fact, we were in an elementary school, Graham Elementary School, which a lot of those students, high poverty, a lot of transient students, and I was among the minority of parents engaged in the learning process. So my heart hurts for those schools, those types of children that do not have the support and the loving family structure that we offer, and I think we have sometimes. It's a little disappointing some days, but I think, you know, we are a critical part of that, of the success of our students. So I would urge you again, I think my comments go to just not feeling as much of a partner. And we wanna be treated as partners, not as pests, not as enemies, because we are very important to the academic and social achievements of our children. And again, if I can just, for what it's worth, underscore, you know, again, my support for offering this option. I truly believe and I understand there are lots of deep concerns about the rising numbers and the cases, and there will be positivity cases. I have no doubt and no illusion that that will occur, but I think this is the best time for, to give our kids an opportunity to be in classroom. I wish I could share some optimism, as some parents said, that October 2nd, we very well could likely go back to in-person, but given that that's sort of on the precipice or the peak of flu season, a lot of concerns around that even being an option. And so I have deep concerns that when I went back and added up the number of days, now I may be seeing a snow day here or there, but if we don't go back at all in-person or in-classroom, my kids will only have, our kids would only have forty-seven days of in-classroom time in twenty-twenty. And that goes a long way to supporting their academic achievement, but also their social, emotional pieces as well. And my kids are, I think, socially, emotionally stable and well. We have had some anxiety issues and we've had some depression and I do, I really do have deep concerns about the silent epidemic that nobody's really talking about. It's being shared a little bit, a lot of it's with the adult population and the concerns are rising, alcohol, substance abuse disorders, depression, that is occurring as a result of COVID. And that has an impact on our kids as well. So I really urge you to consider that piece of it. That is an epidemic. It will be an epidemic and I'm deeply concerned about that. So thank you for your time again. I really appreciate the opportunity to be back here and appreciate all you do and the decisions that you have to make. So thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me have a few moments of your time tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amanda Cox and as the music teacher at Farmingdale for the last fifteen years, I'm blessed to have the wonderful and unique opportunity to work with our students in a very social and emotional space. Social and emotional learning have always been important to our students, now more than ever, as just reiterated. But I also wanna bring attention to the need for us to be able to teach in a way that addresses the actual trauma our students could be facing in our current situation. I'm taking the opportunity to speak tonight as I may have a very different perspective on why entering our return to learning at Phase One full-remote is currently the best option for our entire Plains family. Many of you may know that I taught elsewhere before Farmingdale and from two thousand to two thousand and two, I had the pleasure of teaching in Brooklyn, New York City. I don't need to tell you what happened there in September of two thousand and one, but I can tell you that I started that sunny day teaching in my classroom and then found myself walking through a shower of ash with other teachers and students evacuating them to my home because they were unable to reach their own. I bring this up because having gone through that situation, which temporarily destabilized our community, gives me a very real and unique perspective on trauma in schools, trauma-informed teaching, and what our students will need from us when they make their return to learning in the next few weeks. Students who experience trauma, like for example, the global pandemic that we're currently experiencing, needs certain things in place to thrive. First and foremost and above all else is the consistency of a routine. Routine is just that, a sequence of actions regularly followed. If we as a district attempt to return to face-to-face instruction and open in Phase Two, routine will be the last thing our students will be finding. Not only will their days this year look drastically different with their formerly-held opportunities for socialization and play now all but eliminated, but there will also be the constantly disruptive situation of people, both students and staff and family members, testing positive for COVID-19, having to move in and out of a quarantine situation and toggling back and forth between face-to-face and remote instruction for the entire day of the year or more. This will almost definitely wreak havoc on the routines at home, family work schedules, childcare needs, et cetera. We as teachers and professionals in education have all been working over the summer to improve our remote instruction methods and fine-tune both our materials and our delivery systems. In Phase One full-remote, we will be able to promote predictability and consistency for our students, all while fostering feelings of safety for everyone involved. I do understand that my comments don't even begin to address the health aspect of the situation, as I believe we all know full well what we will experience if we attempt face-to-face learning. We are already dealing with multiple cases in our district prior to a return to learning. Making the decision to adopt Phase One of the proposed plan will present our students with a solid, well-structured routine that will give both consistency and the high-quality instruction that our families have come to expect from the Pleasant Plains School District. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Lindsay Baltel and I have two kids, one going into second grade and one going into fifth grade. First, I want to start off thanking the school board members, school administrators, the teachers, the staff, for all the work they have done to get us ready to go back to the school year and every year. Truly thank you. I fully support starting school in Phase One. The main reason for this is, this is what the school district originally proposed. To me, that means that they thought this was the best option to balance the many risks our community faces, and more importantly, that this option was the one that they thought they could best implement. As I said last time, this is an impossible, an impossible decision with no good options and no one knows what the right answer is. And in these kinds of situations, I rely heavily on experts to guide me. In this case, for this decision, the experts are those who work with our kids day in and day out to provide the best education in the safest way possible. If those experts think that all remote is the best option at this time, I think we should listen to them. I have no doubt that they would do the best they could if asked to continue with the implementation of Phase Two, but if they still think that Phase One is the best option, I want to give the benefit of the doubt to those who have to do the work. I know a lot of people have talked about not feeling heard as parents, and while I do agree communication could have been better, a lot better, I think we also, as parents, need to take the opportunity to listen to what the school district is telling us. They're telling us that Phase Two may not work. They're telling us that Phase Two may not work and we need to listen to them. They know how the school works and what all is involved in getting the kids to school safely. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board in this spot?
Hello. My name is Pamela Nishen and I run a Facebook group for all of the parents here at the school. I am live streaming right now because I had a lot of people reaching out to me that they wanted to watch this live. There is a lot of concern about the technology pieces. I am not going to argue or dispute or anything about which phase we're going to go to. There are a lot of people that have technical questions and problems. I know Mr. Langley is working very hard and we really appreciate the internet for those of us that don't have it, but there's been some questions raised that if we can't even livestream a board meeting, how are we going to livestream all of the classrooms at the same time? So I am just voicing the concern that I am seeing on my Facebook group. I have tried to keep it very non-political in that group. I have turned off a lot of commenting because that group is not what I, I didn't create that group for any of that. That is what your Facebook page is for. But there is a lot of people that are concerned about the technology aspect. So I would encourage you to please spend everything that you can on the technology because without that, the remote learning is not going to work. But for those of us that have no internet, we greatly, greatly appreciate the opportunity to have it. And if, if we come to a point where those hotspots are not working, we would like the flexibility of letting our kids come here and just sit at a table in the corner of the gym to be able to participate so that our kids don't fall behind. That's, that's the only thing I'd like to say.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to address? Hearing you done, I will restate the motion and the motion is to approve starting the 2021 school year with remote learning as outlined in Phase One of the Pleasant Plains reopening plan for a period of nine weeks with review of the plan conducted in each regularly scheduled board meeting. I'll now open it up to board member discussion. Ms. Keys?
Um, what do you want to say?
Ms. Weathers? Mr. Cowan?
I just, I'm thrilled that we have this many people that want to be involved. When all this crap is said and done, let's come back and come to a board meeting, hopefully if we ever have one again, and just be a part of it because it is nice to see parents out of concern. That's a big deal. There's not a soul up here that doesn't want a kid in school. I know, however we vote tonight, there's not one person up here that doesn't want a child in front of a teacher. I don't think there's a teacher out there that doesn't want to be in front of a kid type. There's just, this is, again, I want to say it's a very tough decision to make, but we're just trying to do what's best for the kids and the people in this district.
I promise I won't talk too long as I did the last time. I've had a server we will reach out and ask me for the comments that I made the last time. If you want to hear them again, they start around the 3:03 mark in the last board meeting video and are about 17 minutes long. In addition to feeling like we are the voice of our taxpayers and our constituents in this district and we are all parents, whether our students are currently enrolled or graduated from Plains, we also have an obligation to trust our administrators to do the best thing that they can for the staff and the students and all the families involved. And while I understand that some of you may feel like you haven't been heard, you have to also consider the way the question was worded in the survey, asked if you would be willing to send your child to in-person. I'm willing to send my child to in-person learning when it's safe to do so, but that doesn't mean I think it's a good idea right now. So my obligation is also to help protect the staff and our administration and the teams that are in the buildings that are doing everything they possibly can think of to make sure that when our students do return to their buildings, that they are safe and that our staff is safe. And until we feel like that is the ideal time, I don't have a magic number. I mean, I wish I did. All I know is that there were 53 new cases today. Last night, I was listening to the 186 board meeting that went hours upon hours in length and the positivity rate they were indicating was over 6% at this point in the county. Now, I understand that that may not be the same as our zip codes that we cover, but in the county itself, it's over 6%. We know the district in Illinois, not too far away, that begins school on Monday and already has six students and staff in quarantine. We've heard about staff that we currently have. I understand you want to know these things. We do have to respect some privacy and there is a lot of stigma. People don't want to admit that they got COVID because then it makes them look like they were out doing something wrong. And that's not the way that we want to communicate to our families. So saying that teachers got it and we're not telling you that means that we're hiding behind some sort of a, you know, guise that they did something wrong or didn't protect themselves enough and that's how they got it. I feel like that's very unfair to those families.
Mr. Nessler?
So I, as you pointed out at the last board meeting, my response to everything was, God help us if we're wrong. Okay? You can only imagine, I've been on both sides of events, and I can argue both sides of this, being in healthcare for the past 30 years, I am equally as frustrated as everybody else is here. I get told one thing one day at the hospital, the next day it's changed. Okay? I completely understand. But you want to know why I'm going to change my vote tonight is simply this. Two weeks ago, yesterday, my daughter found out that she was COVID-19. Okay? And I came home and I talked to her and she was crying. And I said, sweetheart, I said, "Don't worry." I said, "You're going to be okay. This affects you less than what it affects you all." And she looked at me and she said, "Daddy, I'm not worried about me." And I kind of looked at her, "Well, what's, what's wrong with that?" She goes, "I'm worried about who I may have infected and what may happen to them." And right then and there, I knew I made a poor decision. And it, some of it's based on, on feelings and I completely, maybe I shouldn't, but I am. My vote will change tonight because I'm not going to tell my daughter, "Hey, don't worry about it, it's affecting other people." I'm not ready to do that yet. And you guys are all right, you know, there may, I don't know what the answer is. Okay? We may never know what the answer is. But I'm not ready personally to take responsibility for my daughter because I wouldn't have gotten her tested. The only reason she got tested was because she was having a procedure that I'll in Friday. She has allergies. She has stubby nose, she had a headache, she got sick, she was not feeling well at night. And I wouldn't have gotten her tested because she has those allergies. Those are allergy-like symptoms, she has that all the time. And I would not have gotten her tested. She and I would have brought her to school, to look out for my mom. And I'm not willing to sit here and tell the teachers of this district and administrators and every other student in this district that my child going to school is more important than everybody else. And I'm not saying you guys feel that way either, but that's why I'm changing my vote. If you want to know why, that's why I'm changing my vote. I'm not ready, I'm not going to be the one, because I got to live with this too. And if somebody in this district gets sick and God forbid dies, I'm the one that's got to live with it because I'm the one whose vote, my vote could have counted to change things. And that's why I'm changing my vote tonight.
All right. Thank you, Cowan. What I would like to say is that when we voted two weeks ago, I felt it was the right decision at that time, but the metrics are changing. I can tell you that in my personal work life, I have approximately 74 employees. Because of the two employees' contacts with COVID patient and our tracing that we did with our internal people, I sent 23 out of 74 people home immediately so they could be tested. Thank God, none of them had it, but we have had two positive cases out of those 74 people. And I understand we have staff that is quarantined and when we go to get substitutes, a lot of the substitute pool are retired teachers. They're not, they're very reluctant to come in, they're not going to come in. And I think that has been expressed to our administration, that they aren't going to come in for in-person learning as a substitute. I understand this is more than an inconvenience. It's a hardship. I really do understand that. I've had employees who have had to take off of their own time to extended family medical leave and the whole gamble when their kids were off this spring and we accommodated them and luckily, we were able to. But I feel this must be done to protect our students and our staff. Without a staff, we can't have students and God forbid, we start getting students sick. I don't want to see that happen. When it comes to technology, I firmly believe that we are going to be in a good position and that Mr. Langley is taking care of things on what he needs. We will provide the equipment to get people the internet access. If you live in an area, if the, I don't know what our hotspots are, if they're rising, if they need to be an AT&amp;T or whatever is a provider in your area, we will work to get that hotspot for you. We're not going to keep you hanging. This isn't the, oh, it's March 13th, everybody's stay home and gee, we didn't realize a need for the next two and a half months. And as I said, we've already seen the middle school sports pause. I don't know when those will start up again because you don't know instantly or while they've been off, someone else has gotten COVID or been exposed to it. This is the hardest decision I've ever made in my life and I don't like saying that the decision I made back then was wrong. I felt at that time, that decision was right. So that's all I have to say at this point. Would you please call for all?
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Keno?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nessler?
Yes.
Ms. Weathers?
Yes.
Five more?
Motion passed. Next would be, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
All seconded.
Motion second on, maybe to the eye?
Aye.
Eye. Close.